Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 15, 2019 City of Kingston Planning Board Meeting. We will begin the meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. My name is Wayne Platt, Jr. I'm the chairman. We also have members Robert Jacobson, Mary Jo Wiltshire, Matt Gillis, and Kevin M. Roach. We also have the City of Kingston Assistant Planner, Kyla D-Day. Senior Clerk in the Planning Office is Donna Brady. We have the Common Counsel Liaison to the Planning Board, Alderman Reynolds Scott Childress. I think I saw him out here. He was in the building. And we have Assistant Corporation Counsel, Daniel Gartenstein. Some housekeeping issues. We have exits at both sides of the council chambers. In case of emergency, we're going to use the stairs and not the elevators. The bathrooms are to my left. We ask folks to silence their cell phones. And if there's a conversation that needs to occur, there are conference rooms at either door in the council chambers. If you can take them to those rooms, that would be greatly appreciated. We ask that you respect the speakers. Are we doing the adoption of them or are we doing the open public speaking first? Yes, we usually do.
Yes, right.
Under open public speaking, we allocate 15 minutes for this. And it doesn't necessarily have to be with anything that's on our agenda. Keep in mind that if you are going to speak, it does not become part of a public record on anything that's on our agenda. So keep that in mind. And if anybody wishes to speak at this time, want to come up to the microphone and... Okay. Nobody's at the mic. We're going to close the open public speaking. Item number two on the agenda is adoption of the... Brandy, I already introduced you, by the way. So you're good. All right. Adoption of the June 17, 2019 Planning Board minutes and the June 3, 2019 minutes from the special meeting of the Kingstonian. Everybody's had an opportunity to take a look at them. Any questions, additions, or deletions? No? Okay. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve both of those minutes from June 17 and June 3 of 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mary Jo Wiltshire. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Public hearings. Item number three is 47 North Front Street. It's a special permit renewal for a residence in the mixed-use overlay district. Section block and lot is 48.314-2-10. Seeker determination, Zone C2, mixed-use overlay district, stockade historic district, and heritage area. Ward two. Maria Philippus is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number three?
Maria's not up here. Do I need her here for this?
She may come later. She said she wasn't.
Okay. This was originally part of a hotel, right? A one-room hotel above here?
She was doing short-term rentals.
That's what I mean. Yeah. This is above Boitzen's, correct? The applicant is not here right now. Do you want to... Okay. She may be here later, so we'll move on to item number... Okay. All right. Item number four. 11 Lounsbury Court and 369-415 Pearl Street Extension. Lot line revision of the lands of Grimaldi. Section block and lot is 56.31-1-36 and 28. Seeker determination, Zone triple R, Ward three. Christopher F. Grimaldi is the trustee and applicant. Frank E. Grimaldi is the owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number four? Okay. Hi there. How you doing, Moose?
I do need to introduce myself.
Yeah, you're going to have to, just for the record.
My name's Walter Eckert. I represent the Neralius Engineering Survey.
Okay.
And the Grimaldi Family Trust.
Okay.
What we're doing... I'm sorry. Do I need... Actually, I need to... We're doing a lot-line adjustment between two lots that the family owns. And the reason they're doing this is because they've built a fence. At one time, they didn't know where the line was. And therefore, they wanted to make the fence the line. And that's really why they're changing the property line.
Okay.
Certainly. And then it follows the fence for the new property line. So the smaller lot, of course, is getting larger.
I never knew this was a...
I know.
Everything meets with zoning and...
They are large lots.
Okay. How's the west feel?
It looks all right.
Matt, you're good? Under seeker, this is a type-two action. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So no further review of the board is required at this time. So I'll make a motion that we approve item number four with Board Policy six. That's it, right? Six? All of the copies. Yeah, you're going to make the five copies, mylar copy.
Mylar.
Yeah, okay.
Written descriptions.
Written descriptions, too. You can submit to them. All right. So that's a motion. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Thank you, sir. Good seeing you. Oh, you're here again.
Very next one.
All right.
If you don't mind.
No, not at all. Item number five. 53 Emerson Street and 56 Johnston Avenue. Lot line deletion of the lands of Lesur. Section block and lot is 56.90-6-35 and 56.106-3-2.100. Seeker determination, Zone R1, Ward one. Elmer Lesur is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number five? Come on up to the microphone, sir. All right. How's that microphone? Okay. You're going to have to speak into that microphone there, too.
Oh, into it?
Yeah.
Hello? Is that good?
That's good.
Thank you.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Of course. My name is Arthur Anderson, and I live at 57 Emerson Street. This is in the neighborhood that's adjacent to the lot that's being co-joined. As neighbors, we have no objection to the co-joining. But we do have a request to the board. We want to give them some information we think is highly relevant in this exceptional case, unusual case, I should say. The two lots are 53 Emerson, which has the residents of the Lesurs on it, and 56 Johnston, which is a mid-block, formerly forested lot that 10 houses look out upon. And it was, without notice and totally unknown to anyone in the neighborhood, totally clear-cut on May 8th and 9th. That means we heard chainsaws in the morning. And by our count, in counting the stumps, there were 27 or more mature trees taken down. This removed entirely the forest or the tree aspect of the lot and led to and could lead to erosion and storm management issues. I have a statement, by the way, I can submit to the record.
You can submit that, sir, yes.
Thank you. A stop-work order was put on the property for potential erosion and storm management issues that is still on the property. The applicant, who's actually a neighbor of mine, and I get on with him very well, except we have a difference of opinion on how Kingston city ordinances read and what their implications are. His plan for that lot is, and he was turned down by the planning board to do it on a separate lot, is to join the two lots, which is fine. And his plan is to put in a parking lot and a, he says, up to five stall garage. He would also replace some of the trees because the neighbors have been very distraught about that. And my request is to have the planning board, if they grant his application for a lot-line revision, to make it subject to them having jurisdiction over what goes on in that lot. Because he did the clearing without notice to any neighbors and without coming to this board or the planning department for a site plan application or approval, we are not clear that what he says he will do with the lot is going to actually happen. It's in our great interest to have it return to a more bucolic area, notwithstanding what he wants to do on the property. I could go into, but it's in my document for the record, what the current violations are in terms of ordinances. They vary from the need for flood damage protection, that may happen under the stop-work order, storm water management and erosion control, that may also happen under the stop-work order, site plan development approval. As I read the code, "All uses of land require an approved site plan, even where no building is proposed and where a building permit or certificate of occupancy is not required." I'm reading from the code. There's also an issue in the code, Part C5, where "All parking areas are reasonably screened at all seasons of the year from the view of adjacent residential lots," and that "The general landscaping of the site is such as to enhance the character of the city and is in character with the generally prevailing in the neighborhood." Likewise, in this, he would have had to comply with this if he had come here properly. "All existing trees," I'm quoting, "all existing trees over eight inches in diameter shall be retained to the maximum extent possible." We've measured all the tree stumps, and there are at least 17 that are diameter 12 inches to 30 inches that have been taken down. We have photographs of this. Another issue here is, and I have a photograph of it here, is he has two non-motorized storage vehicles, one of which is in his driveway and one of which is on the lot. And under Section 40529B, these are prohibited except by special permit from the Building Safety Division. And then the permit can only be given for up to 48 hours and for a total of seven days. So we don't know what's going to happen with this lot. We know with it, under the aegis of the planning board, you know, reasonable things will happen. We don't have that comfort level now in this situation. And we request your asserting jurisdiction over this lot going forward. And I thank you.
Thank you, sir. You can submit those comments. Everyone will do that right now? You want to submit those?
I'm glad to, sure.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on item number five? Okay. Close the public hearing on item number five. Let the record show that Walter Eckert is here, representing the property owner. Before we begin with this, I just, you know, I didn't want to engage the speaker during the public comment. But I'm not privy to what's going on with building safety and the issues that are going on with there. But Mr. Anderson, the items that you mentioned are not germane to what we're doing tonight with a lot-line revision, okay? I understand you said there's a stop-work order put on the property. That really has no bearing on what we're going to be delivering tonight. So... But I do appreciate you coming up to speak. Your comments are part of the record, okay? So having said that, what's the plan there, Mr. Eckert?
The plan is, of course, to take the two lots and create one lot. Deliniating the back lot and making it one whole lot. I am not privy to anything that the client is planning on doing in the future. I'm sure that in the future, if need be, will be brought before you.
And then we can certainly talk about any issues that are germane at that time. So, okay. Everything meets with zoning properly? Any issues with the west on this? How about over here? Anything? Okay. Is this a type-two? Unlisted? Okay. Okay. So under seeker, this is an unlisted action. I have before me a short environmental assessment form that staff has indicated is in order. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Roach. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay? Okay. It's unanimous. Okay. I'll sign that in a bit. All right. So at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number five with Board Policy six. And as in the previous one, getting the copies and the written descriptions down to the planning office. That is a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Roach. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Do I need two of them for this? Need one for seeker on this?
No.
That's on there? Okay. I'll give a quick jot on this one here. All right. Okay. Moving on to item number six. 346 Broadway. It's a special permit for two apartments in the mixed-use overlay district. Section block and lot is 56.26-11-9. Seeker determination, Zone C2. Mixed-use overlay district, heritage area commission. It's in Ward nine. All Seen LLC/Jessica Meyer is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number six? You must be Jessica.
I'm Jessica.
Welcome. All right. All right. So where is 346? Is that by Brewster Street in that area? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah. It's between Fox Hall and Chester.
Okay.
The original approval was probably 2000 and...
I think the original approval was 2016.
Okay.
Under the previous owner, and then it transferred to us. It was under Jonathan Butler originally and then transferred to us in February of 2017.
Are these... Is this something that has to be renewed annually?
It doesn't have to be. Initially, it's a one-year renewal.
Okay.
And after that, you have discretion. She added a second apartment... I'm sorry. A second apartment was added last year during the renewal, correct?
That's right.
So now there's two apartments.
Okay. And how are things going there? Good?
It's gone good.
Good. Did building safety, have they conducted an inspection recently? Okay. Do we have a copy? Are we going to get a copy of that?
We didn't get a copy. Did she do that recently?
Mm-hmm.
Jill did? Okay.
Yeah. I think just maybe two weeks ago, three weeks ago.
Okay.
So we were inspected when we got our CO in February of this year, and then there was another inspection just a couple of weeks ago.
She did do it verbally. She said how beautiful it was. I'm now...
Okay.
... bowing because I think she had scheduled one with you earlier and didn't actually do it and then maybe contacted you to go in.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, right. Correct.
Okay. So the last approval was for that second apartment, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So this is... The parking has all been taken care of for that.
Right.
Okay. What were your thoughts on the term for special for the renewal? Do you want to go three on the next one?
Two, because it doesn't change.
Or do you want to go longer? Three's good?
Yes, it's supposed to go change.
Kevin? Good?
Yes.
All right. Anything else on the board? All right. All right. Yeah, we'll debate that one of the requirements.
Is that something I need to do or you guys get that internally? Okay.
Okay. So under seeker, this is a type-two action. No further review of the board is required. So at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number six for a period of three years. That's with all original conditions carried forward. Also, a favorable inspection report from the Building Safety Division. And if there's a change in ownership, the new owners will have to... That whole renewal starts over again.
Okay.
So, all right. But you're going to hold on to it. So we'll see you in three years.
All right.
All right. So that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Roach. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Excuse me. Item number seven is 685 Broadway. It's a special permit renewal for auto sales and repairs. Section block and lot is 56.92-3-21. Seeker determination, Zone C2. It's in a heritage area, Ward four. Dago A. Maratz is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant owner wishing to speak on item number seven? Okay. How are you, folks?
Hi.
You're Arnold? I can see your shirt. Good? Okay. Can you state your names to the record, please? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Arnold Maratz.
Okay.
Dago...
Your Dago son?
Yes. He's my dad, and I'm calling here for representing. So any questions? She's my translator because my English is not well.
Okay. Nice to meet you.
Dago was traveling, so he's on a boat.
Okay. Corner of Franklin and Broadway, the one with the food truck. All right. So the last renewal was in April of 2015 for a period of two years. And I see a lot has been going on since that last renewal. One thing in particular is the operation of the food truck there now. That's kind of... It seems like it has become a permanent fixture for the property. And what my concern is with that is that it's taking up parking spaces that were part of the original approval that were required for that operation. So any...
What is the story with the food truck? Who operates it? Or is it yours? Are you renting it out? Or...
My dad's wife.
You have to speak up. Yes, speak up there, Mr. Maratz. Okay.
It's for my dad's wife.
Okay.
Okay.
What's its normal hours of operation? The same as the...
Hours?
I'm not sure.
Same as the automotive?
No.
It's usually from like 8:00 in the morning, 7:00 in the morning, until like 4:00.
You know how the... How are the utilities handled in the food truck? Does it have like separate water, separate sewer? Separate?
Do we have any... I don't even know what the regulations are in having such an operation. I know food trucks are popping up all over the place.
Yeah.
I think it's a... I mean...
They're normally mobile.
Yeah, they are. Like I said before, this seems like it's a permanent fixture, part of the property.
We have any comment from building safety on this at all? Or like the utilities or how it's plugged in or...
We don't. And actually, Dago also has an application in to use the lot on... A parking lot on Franklin Street, which we informed him that that's not an allowed use. So he would need to go for a variance for that. So if you want to look at tabling this for the time being and doing some research on the food truck, Dan has done some research on other food trucks around. And maybe look into the utilities, visit the property.
I think a visit to the property would be helpful to see what the utilities and electric and... Because I mean, it seems to be permanently fixed and seems to be like growing in footprint.
Yeah. He does say that it moves for festivals and things. I think he's taken it to different festivals. But there does seem to be a structure behind the truck or maybe in front of the truck. And I'm not sure exactly how that's...
Is the truck registered for over-the-road operation? Do you know? Does it got license plates on it? It does? All right. I tend to agree with Kyla about maybe tabling this till our next meeting. Give us an opportunity to look into food trucks and how it affects what we're doing here.
I'd like to also know how the septic and water is handled because I know I've gone by the food truck and I've seen hoses and things coming out of it and going across the parking lot, so...
And then your dad, you know, at our next meeting, he can be the one to be here to answer the questions. I'm glad you guys came here tonight, okay?
Well, just a quick clarify. Is there specific information about legislation with the issues of mutualizing? You got a fire phone looking for just table and come back with help.
I think...
Basically, there is currently no legislation in our code with regard to them, and technically they're not structured, so you know, they're not subject to the planning board.
Well, correct. But I think we have a current site plan that's in violation right now because the food truck is there limiting the parking of the original site plan. And I think the food truck also is expanding and has some type of structure attached to it. So I think building safety needs to take a close look and make sure that it's truly mobile before this board...
So you want building safety to report back to you, what's happening there rather than...
And how it's being operated, yes. I mean, utilities, water, sewer. I mean, what... How is this functioning?
Just make that...
And I think also staff needs to bring us back the original site plan so we can make sure with the food truck, we have the proper parking, et cetera, that's required for the existing business.
And part of the tabling, can you offer an opinion before the next... At the next meeting about how it affects the site plan with regard to parking?
Everything in my...
Okay. All right.
If they respond to the building safety...
Okay. Sound good? Okay. Okay. So at this time, I'll make a motion that we table item number seven until our next meeting.
And we're going to ask for a...
We'll ask for a determination from building safety on the operation of the food truck and also from...
Inspection.
The health department inspection?
No, an inspection by building safety of the site.
Building safety will conduct an inspection of the site and also get a determination from corporation counsel on how the operation...
Is affecting the existing site plan.
Affects the existing site plan. So that is a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Roach. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Your father will get a letter, okay? All right. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Dan, for that. Thank you, Dan, for that.
Wayne, do we have, uh... Do we have item number three yet?
Yes, Maria's not here yet. Okay.
You wanna table it? Go on to old business?
You wanna table it? Officially?
We're going into old business.
What do you wanna do? You wanna table? Or you wanna wait?
I don't care. Not here by now.
It is 6:34.
Wayne, you can wait till the end.
All right. We're gonna wait. Moving into old business. Item number eight is 602 Broadway. Site plan to renovate an existing single-story building to a three-story multi-use building. Section block and lot is 56.25-3-20. Seeker determination zone C2. Heritage Area Commission, Broadway Overlay District, Ward Four, and the 602 Building LLC in Perrin's. Morgan Coy is the applicant owner.
How are you doing?
How are you?
Good evening.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Morgan Coy.
Okay.
Well, so, would you like me to...
Take us through.
...up to date?
Yeah.
So, after the last time here, I've been, hopefully, checked the boxes that were left unchecked, namely, looking for fire escapes, making sure we have the fire paths all mapped out for the occupancy that we're looking at. Looking at trash plan in the basement. We put two trash or garbage rooms, one for the front, one for the back, that, that address, you know, close to the stairs. So while it's not the easiest thing to do, it does seem to be like the, the most efficient, having them close to those stairwells, and... So we feel like we approached that. As far as the, the material boards that, that were also requested, we kind of went through this, the, it's, it's fairly simple, so we figured we'd go for what these renderings looked like. This is what we're looking at, which is a corrugated dark metal glass brick on the bottom. Most likely, we'll have to, due to the graffiti stuff that's been on, on the, on the brick, we'll, we'll paint it. But it will be painted in a, in this red color scheme, most likely. Also, the, you know, looked at, looked at our parking stuff that we, that was from last time, though that hasn't completely changed. We're also thinking about the trees aspect, since we don't own any of the property besides what is the building, you know, looking at the roof deck as a possibility to have some, some foliage, and also since the whole sidewalk is gonna be redone for the upcoming Broadway plans, presumably, there will be some more trees put in, hopefully. Hopefully, we can have some input into that, because we like that idea as well. Also, went to the Heritage Board with these revised and, hopefully, final plans of what we're looking at. And you can see we have our elevations and all of the, you know, our drainage plans and et cetera. I mean, these aren't, these are, the next step will be going to full-on building plans, but this is the design, as we, as we see it, and that won't change. But the Heritage Board was very positive, really liked it, and... So I feel like we're moving in the direction of, of trying to, you know, create this kind of hybrid of old and new. As far as the environmental testing goes as well, that is scheduled. I've talked with the, with the geologists and stuff, so they'll be doing drilling in the, in the basement to find out, crossing fingers, on initial tests that, that were done, just on the air quality. There was nothing immediately evident. However, the testing will be more, you know, they're gonna be boring holes into the, into the concrete and doing more deep testing of that, and... From the report on 25 Field Court, the deepest that they found the contamination was eight feet. Our basement is deeper than that, so there's a good chance that it won't affect us. But even if there is off-gassing that's found, the remediation systems of, and that's already been... There's ample space in the basement for the mechanicals for doing that, and, and there are systems that...
Okay.
Should be able to do that.
Did we have...
Just so you're aware, that was the Ulster County Planning Board comment, so you can concur with that comment?
That was the only comment they had, I remember?
Yes, about testing, environmental testing.
Did we get anything, communication from Heritage Area on this officially?
Uh, you just went last...
Their last meeting was two or three weeks ago, or something like that?
And they approved it at that meeting?
They approved it.
Okay. We are all in the same, yeah, we're in the same office, but Sue was not in today, so we didn't get to talk about it.
Yeah, no, they were pretty excited about it, so...
As far as the structural components and what have you, the types of materials, how, is that meeting favorably with what we had marching orders from last meeting on this, right? Is that sitting good with folks here now? Are you okay with that?
Now, are these existing trees, or are these trees you're putting in?
No, those were, those were rendered.
Rendered?
On that side of the building, there are no trees. Those two don't exist, but...
Were you gonna put them in, or?
We'd like to, but the whole, I don't know how, how the Broadway, because they're doing the whole sidewalk.
That's gonna be on the front. I don't think that's gonna be on the cross street.
Yeah. I mean, since I don't, I don't know the process of, since we don't own the sidewalk, what that process looks like, but I'm...
We love trees.
Yeah, I'm into it. I like it. I'm in.
Why don't you put that at staff level?
We put it, we put it into the...
Yeah, I, not on Broadway, because they are gonna redo Broadway, but put it on staff level for the side street.
The West is good with that, staff level for vegetation? Okay.
Yeah, I don't know how wide that, that sidewalk is. We'll have to...
Sue can talk to you and figure out if, something that's, just spruce up the street on that side. And you do have a rather large building that's gonna have a bit of metal. So it'd be nice to have a little bit of a green space to offset it.
Well, and we, as, as you know, we are renting the space next door, so the possibility to put some, I can, I can pitch putting some trees in that space as well, which I think, I like that green space. I think that there's a, a nice opportunity.
Next story?
What's that?
Bill Hutton's space?
Yes, yes. So, yeah, he's, he's gonna rent that to us, and, and I'm interested in having that, you know, remain, since we're not gonna build on it, since it's just a rental, and he doesn't seem to have any plans to actually develop it. I think there's opportunity there to address that as well.
Has that been presented to us at all, about something going on there, or?
We've talked about it, but we, you're not actually, at this point, you're not proposing anything for that side lot?
No. I mean...
Really, just green space?
It's green space, and essentially, especially for construction, it will be hugely valuable. But potentially, having that as a space that we could also, you know, do something with, and tie it, and give it great.
Just when that, when that, you know, comes to be, just come on back and see us, and we'll be happy to hear that.
Are we gonna have him come back for site, for signage and lighting, or?
Oh, yes. Well, I'm, I have to do that for Heritage. That's, that's my next piece for Heritage, because that's very important for them. So that was...
Yeah, so that's up to you, whether you want it to come back to the planning board also, or whether you want, as long as Heritage approves it, have it. It's up to you.
I think it could be left at staff with Heritage. I don't think we have to duplicate.
You could with light, that, just the lighting you're talking about now?
Lighting and signage.
Lighting and signage. You okay with having that? Or do you wanna, do you wanna actually...
I mean, they've already approved the renderings of the building, so I don't think that... I mean, they're on the right track, as far as I'm concerned, but I don't, unless you wanna see it.
Do you have an idea of what you're looking at for signage?
And we're, we're far enough away that it's not a priority.
You willing to come back?
Absolutely.
And the lighting is just this, right?
Yeah.
The lighting is just this, right? The...
Well, I don't know if they're gonna do a sign and what kind of lighting, so just have it come back to us.
Yeah, no problem.
And timeline for construction, what's your tomorrow?
Well, the next step is to do the...
Last year.
What's that? Well, the goal, the goal is to, I mean, the first thing, and we're working with engineer already, is to shore up the, the basement and the first story, so that it can build up. So that's, that's what happens first. We've got tentative plan. It's based on, because this is steel, this needs to go off for engineering, too, so that then the load can be correctly done. So anyway, the goal is, though, that, that we have the envelope for this building closed in before winter.
Okay.
That's, that's the goal.
Good.
It happens.
Whether it happens or not, but, but hopefully, I mean, balls are in motion, so it seems like...
Site plan, is there any term, or are we... Just site?
And the other thing we talked about was water and sewer connections, just approved by appropriate...
Yeah. I mean, that's also a major priority, since we're sprinkling this building. So in order to do that, we have to make sure we have a four-inch connection, so we'll be, we will be fully integrating that.
Okay. So anybody else have any other questions? Good over here? All right. Looks like a good project.
I'm, I'm excited. I hope it, I hope it delivers, and I think it has a chance, we got a chance at it, so...
Under Seeker, this is an unlisted action, so we will have to make a determination of environmental significance. I have before me a short environmental assessment form that is in order. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve it. Do I have a second on this? Second by Kevin Roach. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried? All right. So, we're gonna recap here. There's a lot of stuff going on here, isn't there?
There is.
All right. Knox box, good.
Put Knox box on there. I'm surprised you didn't discuss that.
Good. It's been too much, you know? All right, so this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number eight with Board Policies III, IV, IVA, VI, VII, VIIA, VIII, XI, XIV, XIX, XX, XXIV.
One other thing is that typically, it's 120 days to get a building permit. Are you thinking that you're going to do that, or do you need additional time?
That seems...
120 days?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If you need additional time...
Over the sidewalks and the board policies?
Board policies, yes, are in the sidewalks. Any action, any news about the Broadway project and working in that timeline? Talk about that.
Other approvals needed is, and you've already got it, we're just waiting for communication from Heritage Area Commission. Conditions are installation of a Knox box, that's for after-hours from Fire Department. Signage and lighting details, the applicant will return to the planning board. Stormwater and sewer connections, and, and also water connection, will be, have to be approved by Engineering and Kingston Water Department. We already have the parking waiver granted, is that correct, or do we... Was that done at a previous meeting?
It was discussed at the last meeting, but you have to...
Okay. We'll stand by on that for a second. Street trees on the Field Court side will be brought to staff for their approval. The board has also concurred with the environmental testing as part of the Ulster County Planning Board comment. Now, as far as parking waiver... Are we within, we're within... Yeah, I am, too.
We discussed that last month.
They talked about it last month.
Okay.
We talked about it before he spent more money getting these plans to where they're at.
All right. So, we're all, we're good, we're good with the parking waiver, 47 spaces, correct?
Correct. Do we need a separate vote on that first?
Well...
Just make a motion.
Okay, motion by Robert Jacobson to waive the 47 parking spaces. Is there a second on that? Second by Matt Gillis.
Due to the proximity of local public parking lots?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried? Okay, so the parking waiver is now part of the approval, and that is it. Do I have a second on this one? Matt Gillis has a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried? Thank you, Mr. Coy.
Good seeing you. You might see me right now from my... I'm still here.
All right. Okay, now to new business. Item number nine. 37 North Front Street. Site plan to convert an apartment to office space. Section block and lot is 48.314-2-6. Seeker determination zone C2, Stockade Historic District, Ward Two. Morgan Coy is the applicant. Boy, Monophonous, did I do that right?
Yeah.
Oh. Monophonous East LLC is the owner. Let the record show that Mr. Morgan Coy is here. What time do I have here? 6:50? Okay.
Yeah, so this, this is a front apartment. My wife is a social work therapist, and setting up a, hoping to set up a practice in this space has been an apartment, although it's in the mixed-use area. We have offices on several spots.
And what business is this above? Where are we talking?
What business? Well, that, this is above, this, so that...
What's below it?
Below, we have Blue Cashew, which is a kitchen shop.
Okay.
And then Lovefield Vintage, which is a vintage clothing store.
Oh, oh, changes, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. That makes, that clears it up right there.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, God, all right. Okay, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
So, basically, I mean, there used to be one giant, I mean, you may know the history of the building or not. It was a, but upstairs was a giant 2,000-square-foot single apartment with many different spaces in it, and some businesses run out of it. And this was the first building I bought and renovated in Kingston. So this was quite an education for me, but converted it into a front and back two apartments. The back is a two-bedroom. The front was a larger studio space, as you can see.
Put a whole new facade on the front, didn't you?
Well, we really, well, yeah, because basically, that front wall was completely structurally not attached, which we didn't know until later. Anyway, so the whole front had to be rebuilt. Just that, just the second story. So it was quite a, I mean, basically, as with many buildings in Kingston, nothing was ever taken out. It was just covered up, so it had the original gaslight fixtures buried inside the walls.
Some of those lines still have gas in them.
Yeah. Not, not us, luckily. We did check before. But, but yeah, so this was the first project, and I became familiar with the, with the, you know, working with Heritage. This was actually Historic District, so that was a slightly more intense experience. Anyhow, so this is the, the, you know, somewhat internal family pressure to, to get an office uptown, so there's, there's, there's that piece of it, but...
Okay.
Oh, yes, we did. Not, not a happy one. Not, not a happy one. Yeah, it was, uh, it was, yep, full, flushable wipes. Don't use them, in case anybody does. I don't. Um, but it could've, I mean, it could've come in from the way our sewer line was put in. So, even though all the plumbing in the building had been replaced, not to the street. So, it is now, unfortunately. But for, now it's a better system, and that should not happen again.
So, that problem came from another property tied into this house somewhere? Is that what, the, the sewage issue that you had?
It's hard to, I mean, I'll never know. I'll never know. It could've been a tenant flushing flushable wipes.
Yeah.
But it couldn't be routed. Anyway, it was, it was a nightmare. It was, it was terrible. Happened, uh, luckily, we were able to fix it before Fourth of July, because, but, not a good one.
All right. And, uh, number of employees, hours of operation?
Um, I mean, I can't imagine it being, I mean, potentially, there could be group, um, um, you know, counseling sessions that could go to like eight or so, but I can't imagine anything more than that. It's pretty standard, uh, therapy, multiple partners, so I think, you know, it'll be general working hours and pretty low impact.
All right. And any interior renovations to realign what's going on inside to...
Yeah, I think the plan is to, is to create some private spaces in there.
Okay.
And that will be, you know, all done according to, like, in conjunction with the Building Department and inspections and so forth, so...
And any signage? You know, you have to bring it to Historic Landmarks. I don't know if you've got, if that's in...
That's gonna be on them. I mean, they, they know the, the deal. I'm, this is my, my piece of the partnership, and then...
Okay.
Uh, as far as, you know, I've informed, um, my wife, and, uh, that she'll have to go to the Heritage, our Historic Society and deal with that.
All right.
That will be on her.
I don't see any issues with this.
All right, and just, the parking was, uh, two spaces were needed for the apartment. Office space requires one space, medical office four. Um, I mean, we're in proximity to the municipal lot, so, um, I'll make a motion that we waive the parking requirement at this time. Do I have a second on that? Robert Jacobson with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Uh, any other questions? All right. Under seeker, this is a type-two action, so no further review of the Board is required at this time. And that's it, right? Anything else jumping out of this? Okay.
You have a Knox box on this building?
Let's throw a Knox box in there.
But I will put, put one in.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Robert. All right, so at this time, I'll make a motion that, and this is not a, a, uh... What am I talking about here? This isn't allowed use, so it does not require a special amendment, we're just doing site plan, okay? Uh, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number nine with Board Policy 6 that will need to be signed. Um, approval from Heritage Area Commission and, uh, and he's, this is just for signage and...
For signage.
Yeah, yeah, for, from Landmarks Commission for any signage. Uh, we have the parking waiver and the installation of a Knox box. That's a motion. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
A second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Thank you, sir.
And one more.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 10. 586 Broadway. It's a site plan to add an outdoor seating area to an existing restaurant. Uh, section block and lot is 56.25-3-26.100. Secret determination zone C2, Ward 4. Morgan Coy is the applicant. Monophonous East is LLC is the owner. And let the record show that Mr. Coy is here again. Uh, okay. And this is for Tubby's?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Uh, you wanna tell us about your plan here?
Yeah, well, so this is, this is something that I made a mistake on, in the sense that I got, um, my business partner in this, and our contractor. My business partner was very excited about doing, uh, this outside seating area. We had the, we have the, um, the survey on the land. It's within setbacks and stuff. The contractor said he had done one for another place in town, uh, went down to the Building Department. Building Department said, "You don't need a permit. Go ahead and do it." And he built it. So, luckily, it's a temporary structure. We can take it apart. It's not, it's, that was part of the fence situation. You can see the letter from the Building Department that they gave me as well, saying, 'cause I went down to verify that what my contractor had said was true after somebody told me, right after it had been built, that that was not gonna fly.
Okay.
And so, I promptly submitted an application to do this. It was, you know, there was, like I said, it's, it's, it's on me, this one, and, and I, if we need to take it down, we can do that.
You're not, you're not the first one, so...
Yeah, well, I just, you know, it was, it's, it was a mistake, so...
So, where, where was it built? Was this like a parking area beforehand, or...
Um, it built, went over two parking spaces. We still have two more, and we rent, uh, anyway, we have two, two more spaces that are still...
Two?
Those are the two that were, it was built over, and there's two more.
Parking labor? Over here?
Yeah.
And what's behind this fence? Just tables?
I, I think it shows in the picture. Yeah, there's, there's some...
Are you actually adding seating? You serve food at Tubby's, correct?
We serve food, but we don't do table service, so, um, but there are two small tables out there.
Okay. He was just talking about the parking. Parking is based on the number of seats in a restaurant? So, um, if there's two small tables with, what, two seats each? So, it would require a space, probably eliminated two spaces. You probably should at least discuss a parking waiver for the property.
Now, what, when this fence is up, what happens in wintertime? I mean, is, is this where you're taking deliveries to, or...
No, we have a kitchen door next to it, so we take deliveries.
I don't know if it... Over here?
Yeah.
Over there?
So, you can see the kitchen door, that's our delivery...
But based on your parking lot, most trucks pull up. They go around, go in the door.
I mean, but this lot is, is... You can see this, this base, our, our property line goes all the way here, and this is, goes all the way to the adjacent building. However, there is, um, a right-of-way on that alley. So, it's, even though it's our property, there's a right-of-way. I can measure those spaces. We may not, it does go... Did I, did I give the survey with it? I did, right?
Yes.
Robert. It actually looks as though we still have, it's tight. We wouldn't, we don't generally park there. This is the right-of-way. Proposed, not proposed, the, should've been proposed, um, outdoor area. So, the space is theoretically still there, however, in, in practice, it's probably a little...
Still that tight. Fifteen feet.